So welcome to the town of Cordera, Planning Commission for Tuesday, November 14th, 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Kenny?
Here.
Commissioner Busher?
Here.
Wow. You've been practicing. Commissioner Bendel?
Here.
Commissioner Rizzo is absent and Chair Chase?
Here. Thank you. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of California. One nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds, and just as it's for all.
All right, thank you. At this point in every meeting, we open it up to public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. There's nobody in the room for that. So is there anybody online?
There are folks online, but no raised hands.
Okay. Thank you. So we will close that element of tonight's meeting. We'll get right to what we're here to talk about. So this is a business item. This is a discussion. Discussion of old Cordera Square Parklet Licensing Program. So Martha will take us through this and tell us what we're going to hear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Chase, Commissioners and members of the public. This evening, the Planning Commission will discuss and provide feedback to staff on a draft ordinance to regulate parklets within the Old Cordera Square. A feedback received from the Commission will be incorporated into a draft ordinance that's brought before the Town Council. And the draft ordinance was included as Attachment 1 to the staff report. And this is intended to be a discussion. So if any questions come up as I'm going through this PowerPoint, please feel free to ask questions. The Town Council has adopted several urgency ordinances over the last three years. And these ordinances allowed for businesses to expand outdoors onto both public and private property. The first urgency ordinance was adopted in June of 2020, and it establishes two different permits. A TOU permit, which is to expand onto private property, and a TOE permit, which is to expand on on public property such as streets and sidewalks. The urgency ordinance was last extended in March of this year, and it's set to expire at the end of the year. Next slide. A staff has heard from several business owners that it was a lifeline being able to operate outside at the onset of the pandemic. Through the course of the last three years, a total of 12 permits were approved, as shown on this slide. Seven TOE permits were approved and five TOU permits were approved. And the permits that are still active are highlighted in yellow. And this was also included as Attachment 2 to your staff report. Three businesses with active TOE permits would be eligible to apply for a parklet license, as shown on this slide. On the left is a shared parklet shared by Lighthouse Cafe in Bermetown, and this is located at Tamalpais. And these two businesses are adjacent to one another, and their hours do not overlap. On the right is the Zinn's Wine Bar located at 207 Cordera Avenue. And a business that meets the eligibility criteria of the ordinance would be required to submit an application and drawings that are prepared by a licensed engineer to the town. And town staff would review the application to confirm that it meets the ordinance. This slide shows the eligibility of businesses who could apply for a parklet. The draft ordinance would allow parklets within the boundaries of Old Cordera Square, which is the commercial area that surrounds Mankin Park. The proposed boundaries were based on the Old Cordera Square General Plan Land Use Map, except that businesses that were zoned residential were removed. And also properties that did not front public parking spaces were also removed from the boundaries as well. In order to be eligible, a business must operate an eating or drinking establishment. And as previously mentioned, it needs to be zoned commercial. This slide shows the proposed size and locational requirements in the draft ordinance and also size and location requirements of other parklet ordinances that have been adopted in other Marin cities. And Attachment 3 to your staff report includes a summary of the different parklet ordinances adopted by Marin County jurisdictions and compares a variety of criteria. Now, the draft ordinance limits parklets to a maximum of two parallel spaces and four perpendicular spaces. And in instances when a parklet extends beyond the storefront of the business, they would need to obtain written approval from both the adjacent tenant and property owner. And shared parklets would be allowed on a case-by-case basis. The city of Nevada was the first city in Marin County to begin thinking and allowing parklets. They actually started this work prior to the pandemic. And they were basing their standards on established practices from cities that had been doing this for a long time, such as San Francisco, Livermore and Seattle. So the Nevada Design Standards establish a pre-approved menu of options to allow for flexibility of businesses. And our draft ordinance includes many of these design standards in it. And several other cities in Marin County also require the parklets to comply with these standards, including both Larkspur and Fairfax. And these next several slides include the design standards from the ordinance. And the pictures shown on these slides are from the adopted Nevada guidelines. So the parklet surface would be required to be flush with the sidewalk. It would be required to be constructed of a composite decking material. It would need to be accessible to all patrons. And there's also requirements that it be maintained every 12 months with a sealer. The ordinance is also requires that a minimum of four planter boxes be integrated into the design of the parklet. And these would be placed on the outside corners of vehicle travel lanes and would be required to have live, healthy vegetation in them. And materials could include such thing as concrete with decorative finish, wood, wine barrels, pots, iron or other metals. There are also standards related to integrated barriers. Many of the standards relate to requirements for spacing, which is based on code requirements. It also includes standards of what the integrated barriers, the type of materials that would be allowed, which is wood slats, decorative metal cable railing or other iron railing. And it establishes a maximum length of a segment to be eight feet. And as you can see on these pictures, the different barrier segments are separated by the planter boxes. The ordinance allows for shade structures. Umbrellas are permitted. Umbrellas would need to be removed from the parklet outside of the business hours. The draft ordinance does not allow overhangs or pergolas. A shade sale would be allowed with approval of a discretionary designer view. And as part of that application, staff would be evaluating that the shade sale does not impact any lines of sight. The ordinance includes standards related to furniture. All furniture must be restaurant quality and could include wrought iron, wood, steel or cast aluminum. And plastic furniture is not permitted. Furniture covers and cushions would need to be have a consistent theme and be matching one another. Final tablecloths would not be prohibited. Prohibited. Final tablecloths are prohibited. And seat covers and cushions and tablecloths would be required to be removed at the close of business each day. The ordinance includes standards related to lighting. Lighting would be allowed would be hanging lights, standing lights or lights on tables. If the light is hanging, it must have a minimum height of eight feet from the park from the decking surface. And hanging lights are not allowed to be attached to any street trees or public infrastructure. And fluorescent or high-pressure sodium lights are prohibited. And any lighting is required to be turned off at the close of business. The design standards do allow for heating and climate control. Propane heaters would be allowed. Any heater would be required to comply with the Central Marin Fire Department requirements and also the manufacturer specifications as well. They would be required to be turned off at the close of business. And in instances when no one was in the parklet, they could not be on. And there's also a requirement that they not be used on a red flag warning. And these next few pictures are of parklets that have been constructed in Nevada that have been constructed that comply with their adopted design guidelines. So this is at Finnegan's on 877 Grant Avenue. And you can see the decking surface flush with the sidewalk and the use of high-quality materials in the parklet. Next slide. And this is a shared parklet at Mai Tai and Masa Sushi. These two businesses share a building, so they have combined and did the parklet together. Again, you can see the use of vegetation in this parklet and also high-quality furniture. The ordinance includes licensing requirements. Staff is proposing that a business that constructs a parklet enter into a license agreement with the town. The term that is recommended is a term of 24 months. There will be a cost to construct the parklet that will be borne by the business. So staff felt that a longer term was appropriate. The agreement could be also could be renewed as well. And an annual assessment would be charged based on a per-square footage of space that is leased. And staff is still evaluating what an appropriate fee is. We have done quite a bit of research and it varies from about usually around $1 to $4 is what we've seen of what people charge. And that's a per-square foot charge for the space. And in addition, the application would include a $1,500 deposit that would be used for staff review. And a $2,500 security deposit, this is refundable, and would be returned at once the parklet is removed. The ordinance includes a variety of prohibitions. A parklet could not be located in an ADA parking stall within any red zones or loading zones. And they also cannot be within 15 feet of a fire hydrant. Generators, open flames and water misters would not be permitted. Tents and coverings, as I mentioned earlier, are not permitted, except that a shade sale could be allowed with approval of a designer view. No advertising or signage would be allowed. And the parklet cannot connect to town-metered electrical outlets or circuits. And as previously mentioned, they cannot attach to any property owned by the town, such as trees or streetlights. So that concludes my presentation. I am available for questions. And I would also like to point out that several comments were received prior to when the agenda was published. And those have been provided to the Commissioners and also posted on the website. And I would also like to share that Chris Good with our Public Works Department is available via Zoom. If there are questions, he's better suited to answer.
Thank you, Martha. All right. That's a great briefing. So Commissioners, questions? Myra, do you have any questions for?
I do. So this is limited to the Old Town Square. Is there any other area, and I'm trying to think, and I can't think of any, in Cordera that would be open to this kind of parklet idea? I assume the malls are privately owned, so that wouldn't.
Yeah, a lot of restaurants are located at the village and town center, and they have an abundance of outdoor seating. We evaluated if it made sense to have this program at other areas. And, you know, through these last three years, when businesses could apply for these permits, we didn't receive any applications from other businesses.
Like where?
Well, like Casa Buena, the Pete's Coffee, potentially. But, you know, most of the businesses like Paradise and San Clemente are more. You don't see a lot of restaurants over there. I mean, there's Amy's, but they already have that great patio. So they're just, we couldn't think of any other areas that would benefit or really, you know, take advantage of wanting to have a parklet.
So if, for instance, like on Paradise Drive, if Nugget Market decided it wanted to have an outdoor patio, would that be a whole separate or a new kind of regulation?
At Nugget Market, you'd likely see something on private property, which would be reviewed through design review application instead of this parklet licensing program. And also on, you know, that's a, we also looked at street traffic and speed limits. And the speed limits and kind of the square are lower than, you know, on a street like Paradise or San Clemente place where you get higher traffic counts and higher speeds.
And I noticed in the, in the report that you mentioned Colonial Liquors. And is that considered to be part of the Old Town Square?
It is. It's right on the edge. And it was excluded from these boundaries since there's no street parking adjacent to that property.
And does Bread and Roses have food service?
It's currently just, I think, office use. But, you know, businesses could change over time. So theoretically, some of the businesses that currently are retail use could become restaurant in the future and, you know, take advantage of that.
And if if a business puts down that kind of platform decking, is that a permanent, permanently fixed to the sidewalk, to the underneath, to the cement, the sidewalk?
I don't believe it is.
So if something happened, it would need to be removed and it could be done?
Correct. And Kyle's shaking his head yes as well.
And how would this be enforced, the regulations?
So through our code enforcement department. So prior to a business operating, beginning using the parklet, there would be an inspection by applicable staff, like the Public Works and Planning and Building, to make sure that it complied with the ADA requirements and other requirements. And then if, you know, we received any complaints, then it would, our code enforcement department.
So it would be by complaint, basically?
Yeah, and we likely would do some spot checks on the parklets as well to make sure that they are operating in compliance with these regulations.
During the summer, I remember Zinn's was going to have live music. And is there a regulation about that other than it has to be turned off at the end of business hours?
So acoustic music is permitted at any time. I know Zinn's currently does have periodic live music. I think about once a month in the summer months, four times a month in the summer months. So the ordinance as drafted does allow acoustic music. We discussed amplification and as currently written, amplification would be allowed, but it would be reviewed on a case-by-case basis.
Case-by-case as far as events go?
Correct. So a request would be made by a parklet operator to have an amplified event and it would be reviewed by the town.
All right. Does that cover it or you have some other things?
I find the other question I had back to it.
Okay, thank you. Valerie?
All right. I have Hugh. Well, I am personally very excited about those. So I'm just gonna say here. So I'm excited to see all of this, but I do have some comments and questions. Questions first. All right. Is there going to be a set timeline for the designer view by the town so that the businesses know? How long will it take to receive the license?
So the design review piece would only apply to the sales. So the, the application piece, there will be an application form and there's a variety of application requirements. And one of which is that a plan be prepared by a qualified engineer. So that material is all being developed and it would be submitted to the town. It's a, it's a ministerial review. So essentially, we're just checking to make sure everything complies. So there's not a discretionary process for the licensing piece of it. And then if a business opted to do a sale, then that's when they would submit a designer view and it would go through the normal designer view process. So it's not intended to be a long review period.
And for the, are there going to be any guidelines for a business to inherit the parklet? If someone comes in, then the parklet is already there?
So it does not allow a license to be transferred. So if a business had a parklet license and it was sold, then the new business would be required to enter into a license agreement with the town. However, the parklet would not be required to be removed.
Okay. How would they, so if they, if they don't receive the license, do they need to dismantle?
Well, yeah, so if they didn't, if the license wasn't approved, then at that point, it would need to be removed.
Okay. And I know it was mentioned that no signage is allowed, but for the freestanding signage like menu or sometimes I see the businesses putting, you know, like a chalkboard.
That's, yeah, that's not something that, that would be allowed. That's not something that we would consider to be signage.
Right. And will there be any, obviously, like I'll get more into the comments, but there should be obviously, like if it's going to be reviewed by the engineer or drawn by the engineer, it should meet all of the CBC requirements and SaaS regulations and so forth.
Right.
And then are there going to be any specific guidelines for businesses to incorporate elements of public art or some kind of unique expression?
There was no requirements about public art. Obviously, there needs to be landscaping, but we didn't include art requirements. You know, a business, if they were interested in doing something like that, you know, they certainly could explore that.
Will there be kind of recommendations to that or guidelines? Like not requirements, how it should look like, but at least like guidelines to, so it doesn't go a little crazy?
That's, I think that's why something will have to noodle on a bit if we were going to create guidelines. I haven't, you know, I haven't seen that in any other ordinances. I've reviewed a lot of these ordinances and I haven't seen any about public art.
Okay. And will there be any separate permits for lighting?
Um, no.
And is there going to be any kind of system, like a monitoring system, to get the feedback from the pedestrian activity, from the community, like whether the parklet affects the neighborhooding businesses that are, you know, right next to the parklet and so forth?
Yeah, there hasn't been, nothing formal in the ordinance. You know, obviously, if anyone has concerns, you know, they can always contact planning staff to share those. And that's, that's not uncommon. It does, it does happen.
I think that's all of the questions. The rest are just comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. All right, Daniel over there, questions for the staff here?
Yeah, Martha, thanks for this very clear presentation. The, it says that the existing parklets will need to be removed by January 1st, 2024. So what is the schedule for adopting this and issuing licenses so that if they dismantle in January 2nd, they could have their new parklet in place?
So at this point, a business could reach out to engineer to get someone on board to design to design a parklet that meets the draft ordinance. We tentatively scheduled hearings in the town for the Town Council in December, on December 5th and 19th. An ordinance does take 30 days before it becomes effective. So if the ordinance is adopted mid-December, it wouldn't become effective until the middle of January. We have had conversations about maybe there is a way to do a grace period and to allow an existing parklet to extend beyond January 1st, 2024. But that's still something that we're evaluating.
So when it's adopted by council and then there's this 30-day waiting period, would staff be in a position to accept applications?
Yes.
What is the basis for limiting parallel spaces to two spaces?
Well, generally, you don't see businesses that really extend more than two parallel spaces. And, you know, in our research, that's probably the most kind of common of what people allow is two spaces for parallel and then four for perpendicular. So that was our recommendation is based partly on that. Then they're also, you know, you don't want to lose too many parking spaces. So trying to balance the different, the different needs of having, you know, allowing parklets, but still having parking for businesses and patrons to park in.
And let's see. Well, I guess the follow-up question would be, given all the public parking in that area and given this is very specific to the Old Town Square, it seems like the parking argument wouldn't carry the day, in my opinion, carry the day. Is no other rationale other than saving parking, on-street parking?
Yeah, I mean, balancing interests of different businesses and then also too. You know, that was, it's, it's kind of what we were finding in our research of what was most common. But if, you know, the Commission thinks we should allow more than two spaces, then obviously, we'd like to hear that feedback.
The deposit, I don't know what standard practice in the town, but I'm wondering, have we considered holding that in escrow and paying interest on it? If someone has a parklet for five years, 10 years, the town's had their money, no interest. And in real estate dealings, it's very common to have escrow and give it interest.
I think we have done that for other deposits that we've taken. So we can discuss it with our finance department and Trace, I don't know if you have any.
In our practice with past deposits, that if the applicant would like to earn interest, that they open an account with Bank of Marin, which is the town's bank's CD account. And that earns interest and the town is listed as a signer, if you will. And so that money could be taken out without the town's permission.
Okay, thank you. There's a thing that might be a typo on page four of the ordinance. Under qualified businesses means an eating or drinking establishing, including?
Establishment, yes.
Thank you. Why, why does an applicant have to have been in business for two years? What if a person, we have a vacancy, a person wants to open a restaurant and then they have to wait two years before they can have outdoor dining?
Well, the two-year requirement is that they have a lease that still is for two years.
Oh.
So that it aligns with.
So I just misread this.
Yeah, so that it aligns with the licensing term.
Okay, thank you. In the town, some of the sidewalks are quite wide, are probably 10 feet wide. What, what ordinance covers their use of that sidewalk area for dining?
Would definitely be in Title 12. I don't know the exact chapter. I can take a look in a moment. But that would be, it would be a different, it wouldn't be through this program if they aren't using the parking spaces. But I, I think that's something the town would entertain.
And do we have guidelines for that if we let them use the sidewalk?
We do not.
And do we, do they have to pay for using the sidewalk?
Currently, there is no fee to licensed space from the town.
Would it be feasible to add something to this ordinance that would cover use of sidewalk space?
Certainly do that. My only concern would be that I believe the Town Council is expecting to have this ordinance brought before them so that it can be adopted relatively soon. And I don't know if staff could make the necessary revisions for this ordinance in time. But that's, of course, not my, not for me to say.
And I know that our Public Works Director has shared that. And I, I know that our Public Works Director has shared that he is comfortable if, if someone wanted to push the sidewalk out and locate tables on the sidewalk, then that is something that he would be open to and that would be covered by this, this ordinance.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay. There's a reference in page five to a thing called an inner buffer, but I don't think it's defined.
You're right, it's not defined. It essentially is so that there's adequate space between a parklet and then a parked car adjacent to it.
Well, um, do you think we should define it?
Yeah, we can add a definition for that.
Page four, I think there's another uh possible typo. Qualified business means and eating or drinking establishing same, same, same issue. I think it should be establishment. Is there a reason why an architect or landscape architect couldn't be qualified to do the drawings?
Um, are, the use of a qualified engineer was a preference of our Public Works Director. Um, since these are located in the right of way and they're oftentimes close to, to intersections and there are potentially safety concerns or accessibility requirements, and he felt that they were best suited to um to design a, a parklet.
Uh huh, well, a architect or landscape architect could retain a consulting engineer.
That would be fine, yes. At the end of the day.
Engineers, nothing personal if anybody's an engineer here, don't necessarily have the same aesthetic uh as a trained, does landscape architect or architect.
So that, that would be acceptable if someone wanted to use an engineer to design the parklet and then have a, I mean, an architect and have an engineer stamp it as far as the location and the design aspect.
So, okay, um. The requirement of getting a letter from the state of California Alcohol Beverage Control, is that standard?
I mean, it's definitely required in a lot of, of ordinances, um.
Because the business already has an alcohol license.
Yeah, they have an alcohol license to serve alcohol indoors, so we'd wanna see something that it complete, that ABC didn't have concerns with how alcohol was being served in the parklet, the exterior.
There's nothing in the guidelines about the height of planter boxes that I saw.
Correct, and there also probably should be something about the height of landscaping, so.
Okay. Shade structures, um, the removal of the umbrellas, um, uh, in some European cities, very common to have umbrellas that are very strong and they can't lever out uh over the space and it's totally impractical to remove an umbrella like that. That's sort of like a semi-permanent fixture. Can, uh, is there any issue from staff's point of view with that?
Is that more like a, like a shade sail that's affixed to the building?
It's really an umbrella, but it uh, uh, it often is instead of the, the post being in the middle of the umbrella, it's at the edge of the umbrella. And it, and it goes out sort of like that. And it's, in fact, you often don't see the kind of umbrellas we see here in Europe. I just wouldn't wanna preclude that type of shade structure. Uh, I was, uh, would there be a problem with requiring that all lighting be LED?
I don't think so, not from a, I mean, we, we can require that.
It would be consistent, I think, with other town requirements for lighting.
Color temp, uh, three thousand K color temp.
Not a color temp.
Uh, would fire pits be allowed? It says no open flame, but fire pits are very common in outdoor restaurants and establishments.
Um, currently, fire pits are, are not allowed.
Anywhere in?
Or in, in this ordinance.
Well, is there an issue with it from staff's perspective?
We'd need to check with the fire marshal to see if they had any concerns with, with an open flame.
As I know, there's several in Loxbury that use fire pits on this.
One, the Rome Burger has a fire pit, which came before the commission recently.
Uh, though, this may be a, a question for Anne. Um, there's several places where the ordinance refers to the town's ability to revoke the permit without cause. Uh, and if a person is putting up the fee for the license and uh, and is investing what seems they were given our guidelines, quite a bit of money in building the parklet. Could there be some language about cause? Because it seems like it's high risk for someone to put ten thousand dollars into a parklet and then have the town say they gotta take it out for cause.
I think that the town would only do that if the public interest really demanded it. The town is allowing these parklets because they believe to be in the best interest of the town. And um they're unlikely to terminate mid-agreement without, without a very good reason. Now, of course, the um, the applicant can always appeal the decision to the town council and the town council could make the ultimate call. Um, and perhaps there would be negotiations if the parklet was just, say, brand new before it was taken out. But I'd be very surprised if that happened. I think the likelihood would be that the town would either uh terminate more towards the end of the license agreement or after the end of a license agreement and simply not renew. So I doubt we'll see that problem in, in real life.
So is without cause common language in our other contracts?
Yes.
Oh, um, on the design guidelines for paving, uh, is wood not a possibility?
For the area surface?
Yeah, for the floor surface of the parklet. You said composite decking, but would EPE, the example, be acceptable?
I think it would be.
And then um says that everything has to be removed, the decks have to be removed and cleaned once a month. And uh, well, first of all, if their surface is impervious, is that necessary? And how is that gonna be enforced?
It, it would be enforced if, if staff noticed that a, a deck was um looking ragged or or if we received complaints from the public, but we wouldn't be requesting, you know, maintenance records of when these decks were. It's, it's just to ensure that these look nice and are attractive.
Could language that says it must be kept nice and look attractive or? Uh, page twelve, it refers to removal of furnishings and so forth at a reasonable time as maybe as spatters by the director. Um, is there, would it be possible to be more specific and set thirty days or sixty days or some specific time?
Um, what, what section are you?
That's uh, page twelve, twelve point five, zero point zero nine, parklet removal.
Um, yeah, we can add some more clarity of what a reasonable time is.
Uh, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Daniel. Martha, did your question come to mind?
Uh, yeah, um. Uh, I was, the language in the uh paragraph about size, I was kind of, um, it says that under the heading size, uh, it says that um staff does not think it's necessary, given the limited number of businesses um that will use the program to limit the uh parking spaces used as the park got on a particular block. But then it says that in the next sentence, staff recommends establishing a maximum parklet size of two parallel parking spaces.
So that first sentence says that we don't think we need to limit the number of parklets, so many cities limit the number on a block, because they don't wanna lose too many spaces on a particular block. So that's, we don't think we need a cap of, you know, what the number of parklets in, in the square, that we don't wanna limit it.
Um, the other thing that wasn't addressed yet, but every single one of these letters that came in addresses issues of uh parking in, in the neighborhood nearby and enough parking around, and I assume that if tables are being um added to the, the establishments, that there's gonna be even a bigger problem. What, are we gonna do anything about that?
We, we did discuss this. Um, we don't think we're able to add conditions to these licensing agreements, because it's ministerial action. But we do think that we can do some outreach to the businesses in the area to encourage them to have their employees park on these commercial parking lots in the square and also maybe even add some additional signage to direct people to the commercial lots, because we've heard from many people, they don't even know that, that they can park there.
There's only that one lot in the center.
There's the one in the center and then there's one off of, um, if you go to the right, there's a parking lot behind TJ's Gym. That's fairly large and it's seventy-two hour parking, so it's a, a great spot for employees to park.
So I would think that would need some signage or something there to direct people.
Yeah, so we can have follow-up discussions with, with Public Works about what appropriate signs um that.
Because every single one of these, and I imagine it's really impacts the neighborhoods around there.
Okay. I thought I might follow up to some of uh Daniel's comments here, um. Take an easy one. So the umbrella that he's speaking of, there are these arm umbrellas that do fold up, but they have very heavy bases. You can't move them. So, um, they fold up nicely, but I don't know if anybody in this realm would even be interested in those things. They are very expensive and they're, but they're heavy, but they are nonetheless an umbrella that's very attractive and might be functional there. Um, just to comment, yes, for Anne, the termination clause is very common in contracts. It's, it, that's what happens and free will, yeah. Terminate contracts. Um, on the fifteen hundred dollar deposit, um, that's going toward administrative costs, so that gets chewed up by staff. It's the fee, the deposit is to initiate the action by staff.
Correct, so the fifteen hundred dollars would be submitted at the time an application is submitted and that would be uh for staff time review, so it's a deposit, so if not the whole amount is used to review the application and the portion that's not is refunded um to the business owner. And then the twenty-five hundred is a security deposit that's held as long as the parklet is up and that would potentially be refunded in full after it's removed.
Okay, so then, um, when the cost of processing exceed fifteen hundred dollars, then you bill them, is that correct, for that excessive time?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I agree with uh Daniel's comment, composite wood, composite material versus wood would be, there's no issue with that, right? Adding that into it.
I can't think of any if the commission wants to make that recommendation.
Um, there are many parklets I've been in that uh are in need of cleaning. Um, so they do need to be kept up, but removal of everything is uh somewhat problematic, but not too. Um, so on the review of these applications and the removal of these uh parklets while staff gets this ordinance approved and you think, but you're not sure if there is some kind of extension that can be offered so that they don't have to tear these out while their application is.
Yeah, we're working with our city attorney's office and um we, I don't have a, a for sure answer, but if, if it's possible that we can allow the businesses to continue to operate their existing parklets while an application is reviewed, then we certainly will.
Okay. Um, question about the, so Bermetown and uh does not have a current license, but they have, the parklet is in front of their business as well.
The Bermetown and, and Lighthouse?
Yes.
Yeah, so they both do have, have licenses. They both have a TOE permit and they share that space.
And I misread the information there. Okay, so they.
And Bermetown, they were crossed out on one of the slides, because they had a prior parklet at sixty Corder Madera Avenue when they were at that spot and that parklet was removed when they relocated to Tamalpais.
And is there any way to carve out an acceptable for Tito's Tacos over there?
Um, we have some concerns with having that in, in the boundaries. It's, it's zoned residential. So it's a, a non-conforming use currently, since it's a restaurant in a residential zone. And when, when there was the parklet, the Bermetown parklet, the city did receive quite a few um concerns and complaints from uh cars leaving um the adjacent auto body, that it created some line of sight issues as they were pulling out. And that portion of Corder Madera Avenue has a higher speed as well. I think it's thirty-five miles an hour. Um, so we, we've discussed it as internally and we do have some, had some concerns with having that property in, in the boundaries.
Yeah, they, they, they built a uh, on a bunker there. It would not conform, it would not be approved under these design standards. Okay. So the sidewalks are not that wide that we're talking about here. We're talking in front of Bermetown and uh, like what, a four or five foot sidewalk right there, right? And then the street. And the same in front of Zins, it's four or five feet and then the street.
Correct.
We don't have a ten-foot sidewalk anyplace around there.
I can't think of any around the square that have wide sidewalks. Um, there's some wider, I think, on Corder Madera Avenue. Uh, but kind of as you go more towards the residential neighborhood, I think some of those are closer to six feet.
I don't know, uh, unless, I don't know where the property line there is, but the sidewalks in that area where Zins is, they seem like they're ten feet wide. And I don't know, again, some of that may be in.
No, you can't, you can't. No, it's, we'll get to that in a minute.
I also think it's also pretty wide at Bermetown too. I walked that today.
Yeah, it's.
No, I don't know, anyway.
Okay. Sidewalk leasing space, yeah, so that's another topic to bring up. Um, there's nothing against public art going on these things, so somebody could display art, but there's just no statement about.
There's no requirement for public art.
Right. Okay. All right, so I think we've gotten through a fair amount of all of this, so we are at the point where uh, it's a discussion, so we can entertain the audience here to make us, this is, this, this is, we can open this up for uh, public comment at this point, because you guys are gonna be public comment at this point, so you're welcome to step up to the microphone and make your statements.
So I think all the guys know. Highly great silence, Zins.
Right on top is a switch, Kyle.
Loud enough, anyone?
There you go.
There I am. Okay, so Patsy and I own Zen's Wine Bar. Um, and thank you for putting that whole presentation together, Martha. We basically do most of that already, anyway, taking the umbrellas down, putting the cushions away. Um, as a matter of fact, since Corder Madera is such a high crime district, um, we, we even cable our tables and chairs together just to keep them close. Um, we do clean it regularly. I even go out there with a shop vac to vacuum up the leaves and stuff. Which brings about a question. I know that you wanted the, for the new parklet ideas. Am I relegated to three minutes? You want um sort of a synthetic boarding put down, so two or three and a half years ago, when I put the parklet that we have down now, I used top-grade bookshelf, three-quarter inch plywood, uh, and then put an Olympic. top-grade bookshelf, three-quarter inch plywood, uh and then put an Olympic stain on it. And then I have religiously covered it with um water preservative. And it's maintained. It's held up, it's sturdy, it's strong. And underneath that are struts of uh pressure-treated wood. And it meets the sidewalk, which is understandable from an ADA standpoint. So my question with that is, would that be added to an acceptance profile to use instead of using? What is the synthetic board called?
Composite or decking or anything else, right?
Um, it's, it's clean. It doesn't allow food or any items to fall in between the cracks. Um, and we maintain it regularly. There was one piece during this past January that, that did fray due to all the massive atmospheric rivers we had and I replaced it almost immediately. But it's held true. Um, and it's, it's sturdy and strong. So that's something to think about if you would. Secondly, um, I really like the idea of some sort of a grace period between us submitting some plans and you guys accepting them and then me taking one parklet down and installing another one. A twelve-month grace period would be fabulous. But it's something more reasonable, sixty days, ninety days, something like that for, you know, for us to actually conform to what you need for the approval and then to get it up and running. Um, A, from a, a loss of revenue standpoint, secondly, just getting it done between all the paperwork and then the actual construction. Um, in terms of the sidewalks that I almost spoke up about a minute ago. Um, there is a large sidewalk area to, as you're looking at Zins to the right, which is the, the building on the corner, and then to the left um adjacent to Magara and Julie Roots' studio is. Um, the sidewalk did at one point allow tables when we had the parking, the parklet extended that far down. So would we be allowed to have tables there if the owners allowed it in front of the buildings? Um, another thing to think about. Granted, it's not actually part of the parklet itself. However, people like coming to Zins and they like a place to sit.
Okay, well, we can talk that up. So did we get the three minutes on that or?
Um, oh, in terms of the music?
Yeah.
Um, we agreed some time ago actually to, that our music that we host has to reach a certain decibel level. So we don't, we don't allow Aerosmith to come and employ.
All right. Patsy, do you want to take three minutes to?
She's going to be a little.
Thank you to everybody that's done all this work. Um, Martha, I think you laid things out pretty clearly. Um, we are under a time constraint in terms of getting um things drawn now that we know what the parklet needs to look like and what the um requirements are. And um trying to get somebody over the holidays is going to be a challenge. Um, so I do think it's very important that we do extend um and have a grace period so that we can comply to all of this without losing any more revenue. Um, I will say that, you know, it would have been great if we could have kept the two spaces that we originally were given. Um, and it's been a huge loss. I mean, you can do the math, but it's upwards of more than ten thousand dollars a month in loss at this point. And so any space and any time lost with the seating outside is detrimental to our business. So I appreciate if we can look at a ninety-day timeframe. I mean, to get things approved and built and installed properly, um, that's more realistic than thirty days. Um, just materials alone, uh it could be longer than that. I've been looking at some prefab parklet um companies that do exactly what you've shown with the planter boxes and the struts in between. And those guys are six to nine months out. Um, so it's imperative that we stay close to the conversation on this. We all want to do what's right for the town and make sure that the parklet um is built in a way that everybody wants it to be built. And if there is any way to revisit the two parking spots going down the way, um, that would be amazing because that's what everybody wants. I think that's all.
Thank you.
I'm under one, so we made it for Kyle.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we have any uh followers online here that want to chime in?
We do. Um, first I will call on David and then Marika. Um, David, go right ahead and unmute yourself when you're ready.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yep. Very good. So these are my following comments, not in any particular order. The shade structures that Commissioner Chase and Commissioner Kenny addressed can be seen at the RH Rooftop Restaurant and uh they hold up to weather, wind. And uh that's just a good example if no one understands how sturdy they are. It's not clear to me if the ordinance rules out an engineered rain-proof roof structure that can be uh taken down seasonally. Um, I know that Larkspur has gas-powered fire pits that have been operating since COVID without any issue. And my understanding is, is that Zins was granted the ability to have amplified music by the town manager with input from the town attorney and that this has been going on successfully for uh over a year. And I think that Zins also has been using a sound meter that shows that their amplified music is actually uh lower decibels than the ambient uh adjacent car or truck sound. So my, my hope would be that that they will be granted the ability to continue to have that music. Um, I think it's essential that the uh town council entertain uh extending the emergency ordinance. Uh, I, it's just absolutely uh, and it's so correct that you cannot engage uh a structural engineer uh and, and get the materials and get the contracts in place in, you know, probably less than six months. So I, I would hope that the city ca, the town council will do that. And then finally, I don't see how this ordinance addresses uh TJ's use of their parking lot or if it was intended to address that. I mean, I think it's very successful and I don't think it creates a problem for TJ's to use the parking lot for their workouts. But if the town is trying to be even-handed with these uh uh fees that they're charging businesses for using parking spaces, um, in, unless I missed it in the ordinance, I think TJ should probably be required to somehow participate even though it's not a true uh parklet. And then just finally, I hope that when it's time to implement the ordinance, I just hope that the town manager, the community development director, you know, remain flexible and nimble and, and uh give every benefit of the doubt to the businesses that are applying. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Who else awaits? Anyone?
Uh, we're ready for Marika. Um, go ahead, Marika, when you're ready to unmute yourself. You should be.
Marika, are you there?
I can see she's unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Okay, so technical challenge here. Marika, we can't hear you. Uh, why don't you try uh signing off? Uh, is there another person who is waiting to speak?
There is.
Okay, so we'll take Marika off right now. If you'll keep your hand up, Marika, but um uh see if you can assess what is uh not allowing your uh self to be heard.
Uh, we have uh David, uh David Bell, sorry. You don't want to unmute yourself.
Hello, thank you.
We hear you.
Okay, um, yeah, I've been listening to this. Um, you know, I've been attending the B-PAC and I'm part of the Flood Board and I guess I'm frustrated at the lack of public participation. So I want to be a public participant and say I support whatever Zen wants to do. I feel, I'm listening to all this and it's just targeted to like what Zen's bar and maybe Burmattown. Um, I really appreciate, uh, I forgot your name, sir. Um, wish you'd be part of the Flood Board, your detail about um parklets and food, uh, you know, uh wood covering. Um, appreciate all your efforts, but let's make this simple and make it appreciable. Make this a positive environment for Zins and Burmattown. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Another person or are we back to Marika?
Um, Sally Dominguez. Go ahead when you're ready.
Thanks very much, guys. Um, great discussion. I'm speaking from Christmas Tree Hill uh for our place, but also a couple of my neighbors who are out at Ginnipah wanted to be heard. Um, just to say that these parklets have just absolutely revitalized the community around the base of Christmas Tree Hill. Um, since Zins in particular, but also Burmattown have created these areas, the community has gathered like they never used to. And I just can't stress strongly enough how valuable it is for the community, so much more valuable than a couple of car spots. So obviously you're all supporting that. I just um want to urge you to make sure that it's affordable for small business. So many of us are small businesses. We really appreciate the touches that Zins and Burma, but really Zins, right? With the plants and the kind of ambiance they create. Um, and I would hate to make the, the requirements so expensive that we're all unable to enjoy what Kyle and what other places around here have created with these parklets. I'm really hoping that they can come up with something to weatherproof for this crazy weather we're about to get this winter. Um, it's, it's been a delight to see the community come together and we up on the hill have met people that we've never met before through these parklets and through this ability to gather kind of in groups, you know, rather, not just Piccolo Park, but like all the adjacent areas. So I just want to throw it out there that the, the less barriers we can create to the affordability of these parklets so that these businesses can keep maintaining them, keep having their bogan billiards and all the plants, pop up some sort of structure. It really brings such joy to everybody that lives around the square and actually even in Luxber. You know, all of our friends now come to Corder Madera to be a part of Zen, to be a part of Burmattown. So thank you. Really glad that it looks like these parklets can be maintained. Just would urge you to make them as inexpensive as possible for the businesses. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Sally. All right, Tracy, who else do we have?
Um, someone named Rebecca. Go ahead, Rebecca, when you're ready.
Hi, sorry, I um, yeah, Rebecca Shunk. I live at um the top of Summit um on Christmas Tree Hill. And I just wanted to say that uh really reiterate maybe what Sally has said, which is that, you know, it's really just made a dramatic difference in the community around uh and Corder Madera. I mean, I think we've always felt like we haven't really had necessarily a downtown. We've had these malls, but there was not really a place for the locals to hang out. And uh this has just really been transformative and I think it's really important. I think we don't want to, you know, make it so expensive that places can't do it. We'd like, in my opinion, it seems like our town would want to make it so that other um spots might, you know, decide to do that as well and really kind of um enliven the community. Um, I, I also was just a little bit listening to all the different requirements. They do sound, um, I know you're trying to balance the needs of the, of the neighborhood and, and equity and all that sort of stuff, but it, I guess the one thing that I thought was that it seems a little bit like the, the math doesn't work out with getting the ordinance and then requiring them to tear them down by January first. I'm wondering if you could, if there's a way to pause that requirement to tear down the current parklets until the process can be developed um such that there's more of a smooth transition. Um, it seems like that's, the intention is to have these parklets. And so if that's the case, then um can we just not post, you know, cha, make it so that it would be fluid? They can go from, you know, their prior require, you know, make the timing work. Um, that, that, that would seem logical to me. Um, and, and really I, I had heard that other places like in Larkspur were requiring, you know, inordinate amounts of money every month. I mean, I, I can't imagine that uh um a place like either, even Burmattown or Zins, even though they're busy, could afford two thousand dollars a month or something crazy that I heard. I don't know if that was true or not, but we really need to make it affordable because it, this is value-added as far as I'm concerned. It would seem like, you know, even the taxes would be in, increased by having more people come there. And, you know, I've been there at the busiest nights they've had and you could still find parking, you know, and it, it just really is people wanted to be there and be in our town. And um, and so anyway, I, I, I vote yes and I would say to make it as simple as possible. And I appreciate you taking the time to hear what I had to say.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Uh, we still have Marika here with her hand uh raised. I'm going to allow you to talk. Go ahead and give it a try and mute yourself.
Yes, this is Mark Madden representing. Marika, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. So I have two ifs and then a then, which is, am I correct in saying this would be under this ordinance proposed ministerial?
Yes.
And if this is in part seeding public property or public access or public uh right-of-way to individual businesses, is that correct?
It's a, it's an encroachment.
Yes, okay. So then here's the then, what in the ordinance uh makes it compulsory or mandatory that whatever parklet is constructed is consistent aesthetically as well as safety and parking with the town square?
Well, there are elements of the design guidelines that say what these things have to look like and what materials can be used. So it's in the ordinance for that part and it's also reviewed by staff and then can be inspected. So those are three elements of the ordinance.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, would you be, would you be kind enough to just reiterate those things in the ordinance having to do with aesthetics and safety, please?
Well, uh, we can do that when, with the appropriate amount of time, the ordinance is available. Uh, Martha might summarize this quickly.
Yes, now I would appreciate that.
The ordinance is available online. I'd recommend that you review section twelve, five zero, oh, five zero B, which includes the various design standards. And the design standards include such things as the required surfacing material, um, the requirement that planter boxes be integrated into the parklet design. It includes information on requirements for barriers, um shade structures, furniture, um lighting, um et cetera. So that would be the, it's about three pages of the ordinance and it is available online. And if you have trouble finding it, um, you can send me an email and I'll be happy to send it to you.
I appreciate that. And what about a small item, but what about the removal or and or placement of garbage cans?
There is not a requirement that garbage pan, garbage cans be placed in the parklet. Uh, that area around the square, I believe, does have garbage cans. Um, so you know, obviously staff would monitor if there is any um litter. Uh, there is a requirement that litter, that areas surrounding the parklet be maintained on a regular basis um to pick up any litter or what have you.
And last question, when will or how will staff monitor that?
Um, it'll, we have a code enforcement officer who is in the field constantly and he'll keep an eye on parklets. Um, and also other staff, such as planning staff, will make periodic inspections as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark. All right, Tracy, any other summary?
No, Chair Chase.
Okay. Go ahead. How you would like to say something else briefly? Uh, would you step up to the microphone, please?
In reading all the documents and all the information that came through, there is an encroachment permit fee that has to be done as well as the permit fee as well as the deposit?
There's three, three fees in the draft ordinance. There is a deposit when you submit an application that is designed to pay for the staff review of the application and that amount is fifteen hundred.
Right.
Then there's a security deposit that would be. Then there's a security deposit that would be refunded when a parklet is removed and that fee is 2,500. And then there's an annual assessment for the leasing of the public right of way and staff is still working on, um, a recommendation for that fee. And that's based on a, a square footage of area that's leased.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. All right. But with all of that comment and input, um, do you guys have any more questions or staff at this point? Daniel?
Actually, I did have one relative to the ongoing, uh, use fee. Are you looking at other towns and what they're doing? Is it bear some resemblance to the revenue or the cost of the, of the developer or, uh, you, you know, developer of the parklet? In other words, sort of coming back to the question that some of the citizens who called in, you know, making it affordable so that, you know, we can encourage people to do this.
Yeah, we have spent time evaluating fees that are charged by other jurisdiction. I would say kind of a common fee is $2 a square foot per month, which equates to about 2,200 to 2,500 dollars a year. Um, the city of San Rafael, their fee is 3,600 dollars a space per year. Um, Mill Valley has one of the higher fees because it's based on lost revenue from their parking. So they charge 2,250 a day, um, per space. So it's quite high. And then there has been a lot of, um, comments in the community about the Larkspur fee, um, which one of the businesses had raised concerns with how expensive it was. And you may have seen it in the IJ article, but their fee was $4 a square foot, um, per, per day. So kind of it, it varies, but you know, we obviously will be mindful when we're, um, establishing a fee to not make it, um, too burdensome.
Okay, thank you.
Margaret, anything else?
Um, I have comments.
Okay, we'll get to those in a second. Um, the one other question I, uh, wanted to ask was, uh, what has been the involvement of the Chamber of Commerce to date on this issue? Has there been any, um, effort or involvement or statement about this from the chamber at all?
None to, to staff. I think they may have attended one of the prior town council meetings. Um, the last, I think last year, um, but we haven't heard any recent communications from them.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Um, so our job here is to make, uh, recommendations and a list of things for these folks to take back to, uh, their offices and create something for town council to review. So, um, we should, um, bold points as best as possible for staff in your commentary. Um, and, um, there's, there's obvious suggestions and or the leads that you think are possible. Um, takeaway is as valid as adding to. So, you know, um, let's start in. Um, Daniel, you're a scribbler of, uh, immense aptitude there. So, um, why don't you start in with your list of stuff?
Uh, well, I'm, I'm really, really happy to see all the community support for the parklet side.
Uh, would you turn the microphone on? Yeah, thanks.
That, you know, what this does for the town and the kind of vitality and attractiveness of the town. Um, uh, so I'll just take these in order. I think we already talked about the timing issue relative to removal of the car and parklet and giving people some time to get the permit in and, and get the design done. So I'd like to see that if it's possible. Um, I, I still, uh, I still think the limit on two spaces may be unnecessarily restrictive. Um, particularly if, uh, a person could get the permission of adjacent property owner uh, and their tenant, that they wouldn't have a problem of extending to an additional space. Uh, I'd like to see inner buffer defined in the ordinance. Uh, it seems like to some extent, to extent that sidewalks are wide enough that some of the same issues that apply to a parklet apply to, uh, using the sidewalk for dining and putting chairs and furniture and planters. So I know it may be a little late, but I think adding something in here to that effect might be helpful. Uh, I'd like to see an architect or a landscape architect added to the consultants that could develop the technical drawings, perhaps with, uh, uh, certification by an engineer. So we wouldn't eliminate the idea of an engineer, but, but, um, add the possibility. Uh, we talked about, uh, adding a limitation on the height of planter boxes and barriers. Um, I'd like to see more flexibility around the umbrella, what we talked about, rather than it may be a kind of an umbrella that does not have to be or not practically can be removed at the end of the day. I'd like to see if lighting is added, that it be required to be LED lighting. I'd like to see if, uh, the fire marshal has any objection to fire pit, uh, as a, one of the heating methods. I'd like to see some additional options for the decking surface other than composite decking, both for financial, aesthetic and other reasons. I'd like to see a, set a specific time for the removal of the parklet rather than to be determined by the community development director, which seems like it's, it puts the director in a difficult position and, and I think it's some, you know, maybe that it would be a, a point of contention with a person. So I think if it were defined. Um, and then amplification, uh, I think amplification could be okay. And, and it may be that if we could set a decibel standard rather than making it not possible. That's it.
Okay. Well, that was very clear. Thank you. Um, Valerie?
Right. Um, I agree with all Daniel's comments too, and, um, I have few to add. Um, so again, just for the application process, it would be great to see the process diagram. And now, um, you Martha kind of started outlining what the process is. Very quickly you have it in your mind. It would be nice for all of the applicants to see an easy way where they are in the process and kind of to navigate them through. As well as for the ordinance, it would be great to see almost like a sample of the side diagram, uh, ADA diagram, drainage diagram. Um, it will help again to very quickly evaluate what they would have to do. Uh, speaking of the drainage, I haven't seen anywhere in the ordinance talking about the drainage regulations. Uh, so my recommendations would be to, for the, um, uh, pockets to provide the drainage channel, uh, that would meet their requirement. And I mean, whatever the city, uh, would require, but, uh, typically it would be like a three inch tall to, I don't know, maybe like a two feet wide, um, with the perforations on each end. So that it allows for cleaning, uh, easy cleaning ability and kind of like maintaining the debris under the, uh, structure as well. Um, in regards to the uh, planters, height limitations, um, I kind of done the research around and I've, and also by the, uh, building codes, what is recommended is about like the, if there is a barrier or a planter, probably not more than 42 inch, uh, above the duck. And then perhaps additional 18, uh, inches of the transparent material if applicant will want to add. So overall height would be 60 inches. Um, there are no any comments in or regulations in regards to the round planters. Uh, we probably would want to avoid any small size planters. So it doesn't get knocked out by the pedestrian or the car or anything. So, um, perhaps some limits and regulations to what the run planters would look like. Um, I would also add that the structure must be designed and constructed to sustain the dead loads, uh, lows due to detention, inflation, live loads, um, and these seismic loads. And I know that it will be approved by the engineer, but like adding the language in the ordinance would really help. Um, uh, again, like, uh, we talked a little bit about the meeting, the CBC guidelines, uh, CBC regulations, uh, throughout, but you know, kind of requiring the engineer, uh, would cover that. Uh, but also adding the vertical height limitations to these structures would really help. Um, like for instance, not exceeding the seven feet height for the posts. Um, then I haven't seen if we have any regulations for the wheel stops at each end of the lighting. So if there is a parallel parking, um, it, you know, there, there could be a danger that the car can like run into the planter or the fence. So it would be great if, uh, we could add additional barrier in each end. Um, in regards to the umbrellas, uh, again, there is no limitations to the height. Uh, so even if they are portable and could be dismounted, uh, between seven and, and 10 feet tall. I think that would be a good limitation. Um, in regards to the, all of the umbrellas or the shaded, approved shaded, uh, structures, uh, that we will be under the review. I think, uh, we should mention that they cannot cover obstruct tree branches or leaves from being exposed to the sunlight or rain so that the trees don't get damaged, um, just because of the umbrellas covering the sunlight towards on them. Uh, also the umbrella should be, I mean, that's logical, but I think the language would be helpful in ordinance that umbrellas must be placed away from the propane heaters. Um, then in regards to the furniture, I know we're talking about the, um, uh, material of the furniture and the high quality, but I think it would be great to uh, clarify that it must be secured or be able to sustain live loads like wind, for instance. Um, some, some umbrella graded fabrics. So it's prone to fading, um, that are not prone to fading, sorry. Um, and then in regards to the lighting, uh, so there is no requirement currently in the ordinance for the lighting permit. Um, Daniel has mentioned the LED lighting, which I think would be in lieu with what, uh, we're trying to achieve environmentally. Um, but I think it would be nice if the, um, you know, if the engineer is looking over the structures, we also have the licensed, um, engineer looking at the lighting and it's due to because it's an outdoor lighting, um, and it's prone to the, uh, you know, weather, uh, damages and throughout. So I think that would be great if that would be looked at or any language added in regards to that. And then maybe language added that the battery operated cordless lighting is encouraged in those areas. And, um, it would be good to see that the side, uh, side plan demonstrates the fire separation distances, um, for the, um, uh, openings and protection of them, uh, demonstrates the compliance with the materials for the CBC seven or 5.5 section, um, obviously access to fire extinguishers and so forth. For the heating and climate control, uh, I think it would be good to define the distances for the propane heaters, uh, for instance, five feet away from the combustible materials or, um, and not or, sorry, six feet clearance on both vertically and horizontally from trees as well. Um, I, I didn't ask this question, but will there be a permit required from the fire, um, department for the, um, any heaters installed?
We, we do consult with the fire department, um, for those heating and, um, heating standards. Um, and some of the language included in the ordinance came from the fire department. Um, so they likely would inspect a parklet to make sure that things were installed correctly.
Okay. Yeah. So it kind of like wraps up around the distances and away from the trees as well. Um, in other, in general requirements, I would add clarification that public street should not be removed or pruned. Um, and it will, um, we'll, we'll go with the license verification if that happens. Um, and then see, and then for the, uh, removal of the parklet, I would love to see the clause that, uh, would align with the environmental goals as well. So if the parklet needs to be removed, um, the disposal of the materials, uh, should be in accordance with what we're trying to do here, even though I know like the parklet itself is exempt environmentally here. Um, I would also add a clause for the little notice of removal due to the public safety regulations. So we talked about it a little bit, but if, uh, the business needs to remove, um, very quickly the parklet, uh, I feel like it should be a separate clause in general. And compliance with the California environmental quality, uh, I mentioned earlier, I understand that it's exempt from it, but um, how will the town will ensure the impact, um, environmentally from these, uh, parklets if they're used negligibly? Um, so litter and other things like if there, especially if it's a long-term installation, if there, you know, rats start living under the structure and all of that stuff, because those are difficult to see in the surface. And, uh, we just need to have some kind of, uh, regulations spelled out in the ordinance to make sure that we clean them under as well. That's all.
Okay, let's go to it. But, uh, thank you. Well thought. Um, the town's going to hire a cat. I'm just kidding. So, um, Margaret, Margaret?
I have, um, still have some concerns about parking in the neighborhoods. I don't think they've been addressed. It's been very well addressed. And I think given the number of letters that we got here, each and every one addressing parking, I think that is a subject that still has to be looked at. And especially, um, I understand that people can walk there if they live on that side of Corte Madera, but I happen to live on other side of Corte Madera and I would have to drive my car and park somewhere. So I'd like to know there's a parking spot somewhere for me. I, I also have some concerns and I don't know what the garbage collection is, but, uh, you know, the big cans that we have to wheel out to the curb. And if the, uh, parklets are taking up space on the curb, I have some concern about how the garbage is going to be collected. Um, and how the garbage cans are going to get back to the, uh, an area that's not seen any, anymore. Garbage cans in the streets have, have been disturbing, uh, people and neighborhoods before this. So I'd like to know that that's being taken care of. Um, no one has said anything about animals and the fact that, um, there'll be animals passing by on the street as well as I know people bring their animals for out for the specific purpose that they can have, be outdoors with them. And, um, and so I kind of wonder if we shouldn't somehow address something about animals. And I really don't know what exactly, but it's something I think we ought to think about. Also, the open fire pits, I think presents a liability for the town. Um, especially because the sidewalks, a- as I'm looking at th- this picture that's been included in the report of Zins, uh, looks fairly narrow. If there was an open fire pit somewhere along there, I think that even somebody passing by or the wind picking up somebody's scarf or something would start, uh, would tend to be a problem. And I'm also wondering about this picture because it looks like there's an enclosed space, but it also looks like there's a space that's not enclosed.
Yeah. Um, to point out, Margaret's looking at the photo of the front of Zins and this is in the, in the parking and this is the sidewalk here and the pedestrian space goes through right there.
Goes through it.
Yeah.
And so, um, I, I'm just, I, I want to make it reasonable for people who are not going to be sitting there and just need to use that thoroughfare to, um, be able to feel comfortable doing it and, and also safe um, for their animals, for their, uh, and, and their wellbeing. I imagine there, there's going to be a lot of foot traffic there. And I think somehow we have to really be cognizant of the fact that it, it might cause accidents of some. It it might cause accidents of some sort. I'm not sure how I feel about extending the space into an area that doesn't front. The business itself, but I think that um. I think that we have to start out and see how it goes. I don't think um it's it should be a decision and sort of be a free for all. Um and uh I also think that we ought to give. A grace period to the businesses that already have. Um a parklet there because it's, it seems just a waste of energy. To take it down and put it up again. Well, I was also wondering about street cleaning. The big machines that come by for street cleaning and how that that's gonna work too. Those are just concerns I had that I don't think. Have been uh at least not addressed in this document.
Okay, alright. I'm going to sort of comment on your commentary just to help clarify a couple of things. Um and Kyle and Patsy could confirm that, for instance, garbage, I witnessed that they're picked up in the mornings. And it it the bins are brought out the night before and they're picked up and the bins go away, so it's not been. So it's, that's how it functions there, and I'm not sure how it functions at Berma Town and. KF Lighthouse Cafe, but um um I sit, I. The garbage trucks are there at six o'clock in the morning, so. That's when they do their pickup um and it's. Thing, so. Question for staff about this, animals in an outdoor seating in a restaurant are acceptable. Is that sort of a state thing or is that a food thing or where does that land? Does anybody know?
Research that personally.
So in in many communities, they have ordinance that say you can bring an animal to an outdoor seating. And some restaurants disallow it and some do, but I've heard that it's a. Some sort of overarching state uh requirement or statement. So and we have the uh benefit of these having existed now for roughly three years, right? So um the access and how they function has sort of been proven, we're not in a vacuum here trying to create something. That uh we don't know anything about, so they've navigated this uh. Uh minefield. And.
Every dog in Corder Madera comes to Zen. So navigate the walkway.
So but um to this, the number of uh. Street parking spaces. You guys have essentially the two spaces in front of Zins and you occupy one, just one space in front of. One in front of Zins and the the construction manager uh space next to you. Right, so. Right, so that was, you're not at the microphone, but I'm gonna try to just say that there was a reduction in your space. Due to the tanning salon asking you to remove the parklet in front of its storefront. So now it's clear that's probably not gonna get restored, they're not gonna back off on that. So I don't know unless there's some action going on that we don't know about, but you know um. So you're sort of limited there. Oh, nice, that's community. So, you know, um that's what's happening with um the parking spaces and. They've been through this uh struggle in front of Zins to to date with that. So hopefully. The good vibes rubs off. I think that um. The uh. Fire pits would be nice, but I don't know, you guys have no intention of bringing those along. And I don't think that Berma Town or Lighthouse Cafe are gonna spring for fire pits. Not that somebody else might not do that. Yeah, seating, yeah, you don't need a fire pit, but. If you were over in Larkspur maybe, but you don't have the space, right? So. The um. I'm also in this camp, I don't need to reiterate very very much, grace period absolutely needed, it's gotta. Somehow be incorporated into this thing. I think that uh. These other commissioners have brought a good deal of uh valid points to the table here and uh Martha's been previously recording all of this stuff. So I don't feel the need to reiterate any of this stuff, it's been, they've stated it well. Um I did have one question, is TJ's parking lot on private land?
Their parking lot is private property, so there's two different permits, the TOE permits, which were on town owned property. And that's what the parklet program would be for, for businesses to have build a parklet in the the right way. And then businesses that have been using private property through the TOU permits, those are not part of this program. Um in the future, planning may evaluate if there should be a zoning ordinance amendment to allow for gyms to use. Private parking lots, but that's not part of of this ordinance before you.
Yeah, there's just not many in opportunities here uh for this kind of thing, so unless the the uh. Woman only gym decides to move into the parking lot, um there's not many other spots that are gonna occupy Corder Madera Square. Um for for Margaret's uh commentary, if there was a way to ask businesses. To create an employee parking awareness, that they could park across Redwood on the other side over there. I have heard that before that employees of other businesses have parked. On the street or another, they could be asked to park over there and the town might identify the parking lot more thoroughly as. Employee parking over there in some way. That parking area is full every day. I have to ask myself, what are all these people doing here? But it's full. Sun up to sundown. It's kind of amazing, so and yet I think the businesses could use the help. Of a program publicizing what's there. Our town manager and might reach out to the chamber and say. Create a program over here for bringing people to the square. You know, publicize these businesses, publicize the line bar, get on board with that, they, these guys have. Donated so much effort to the town, it's admirable, so you know, they've created this community and everybody on our street. Highly values being able to go down there, it's one of the reasons they love it there. And it's just, this has to be encouraged and made friendly. It's such a revolution, it's the only good thing they've brought about.
Zoom wasn't set bad.
Right, so um it's. People love it and you guys have taken advantage of it, it's great. Um it just needs to be encouraged and so the less imposing regulation for it, the better. But um I think that. It's all good, you guys have done a great job with this, let's get it back to the council.
Peter, I do have one clarifying question. Uh and use Zins as the example, but it's a more general question. Uh I I think the parking space, the parklet space on the south side of Zins. Is half a space, in other words, half the space is part of the adjacent. Uh property owner, um and then they have half a space. Uh that goes all the way to the book, to Nubbin at the corner, which is. Uh in front of the construction company's uh space, so does the ordinance, so that, so that. Does the ordinance currently allow them to get permission in this, like a condition like this? From that adjacent property owner, yeah?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's in there, yeah. It's important. So. Alright, I guess my question then to staff is, um what else do you need from us?
I don't think anything. Thank you, thank you all for your feedback, it's very appreciated.
Right, I I I think everybody here is on board with supporting this, the town uh citizens for the most part seem to be, seem to be on board. So I think we have a. Great opportunity here to move this into a. A real entity for the town uh municipal code. Thank you. Alright, so nobody else could ever see here, right? That's it for this uh item and then we're gonna move on to um. Reports and other things, you guys got work to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So after all that, it feels sort of anticlimactic to get back to business here.
They could have brought some wine for us.
Samples, they're called samples. Okay, so um I listened in to the last uh council meeting. And you can tell by my scribbles here that I was probably falling asleep while I was watching it, but um it was a. Purple Rental was essentially adopted, right, our work uh was. Uh formally now adopted, corrected, is now going to be the law of the land come January, is that right? Yeah, right, so that was, that was great, without a lot of fanfare, um. The um. One of the next items was about the Corder Madera Community Swim Program and that took up. I don't know, like forty minutes. Uh relay that, they had a very detailed report and um. The council members were very interested in who, what, when and where, the problem that the next year is going to encounter is that. The uh Redwood High uh pool is gonna be resurfaced, so it's gonna be out of action, so there's gonna be a shortage of. Pool for students and community members, highly supported program. So then the uh recreation plan uh. Or specific to Co Park. Was um adopt the resolution, that was for the uh Sequa. And approving the first specifically at the Co Park, there was very little comment about that, as I recall, that, did any of you guys watch that meeting? So um but then came the uh. Rest of the um. Park and Rec Plan, and so there was a a unanimous uh agreement to adopt it. But let's see, they talked more about um the the items that are at the top of the list. Adam was informing them about the new bathroom that's gonna go in, there's still a talk about turning the uh tennis wall. Into a pickleball court. There is um still talk about what to do there behind the community center. Um they are still trying to just do basic um. Grass maintenance for the park and not tear it all out, um so that's gonna, if they ever do that, it's gonna be a few years away. Um I think one of the uh important parts was the Menke Park uh scheme. That yeah, they've adopted now to go forward with figuring out what that looks like. Um there's a designer involved and so they have uh got the. Corder Madera Community Foundation is moving a design along and at some point the town will take it over. But um they want to remove some parking spots from um Menke Park there against the pavilion. So that's a, I think that's something that could be problematic, but um. The the Menke Park uh needs that. New. Provision, it's very important to do that. So with that said, there wasn't much else that um was of interest, so that was the most important part. Um at the um. Town Volunteer Dinner, um the temporary head of Park and Rec was confirmed to be the um. The head of Park and Rec, so I forgot the gentleman's name. Does anybody here know it? Tim Berry, that's right, yeah, so he's now the man over there. So that's all I have to say. Staff, do you have anything else you wanna contribute to this?
Uh just as far as report from staff, um just a couple notes on schedule, so we're gonna move forward and cancel the November twenty eighth meeting. And the December twenty sixth meeting, so we will plan to meet December twelfth, well, we are anticipating a couple items for that date. Um so keep that one on your calendar. And then um just in some other news, um as part of Housing Element Implementation and Regional Planning. The town submitted an application to our regional um entity of Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Association Bay Area Governments uh for their priority sites um. Program, and so this was Martha's work actually, and so we did hear that our two priority sites. Which are two priority housing sites um are uh moving forward for recommendation to the MTC Board. For approval, um so that will help facilitate some pre-planning for those two sites. Um in anticipation of them being developed for housing.
What does that mean more specifically?
So it it essentially allows for fu- regional funding to help facilitate housing at a variety of sites. We need to meet certain parameters in order to qualify for a priority site. And includes um like a minimum number of of units, I think it's a hundred and twenty is the minimum number of of housing units. Um so it will allow for these property owners to apply for um funding to do pre-development analysis, whether that's. Uh market rate analysis or hiring design profession professionals to help with the design of a project. Um so it'll be gr- grant funding available to property owners to move move housing projects forward. The the two sites were the Macy's site and then the the Nell and Pfeiffer site. Um just north of us, which includes the the big five and that office building.
So I I did see the um presentation uh on that. And on the technical assistance uh category, uh is that a uh. Is that where we could use the money to hire a consultant or the consultants provided by by um. TPC?
I think both are are potentially options, I think there will be um consultants that ABAG MTC will have um that we can utilize. Um so that's still kind of being being worked out, um and as a first step, we'll meet with property owners and see what's what's most beneficial to them.
What else, Amy?
That's the extent of our report tonight.
Okay, so lastly, we had some minutes for October twenty fourth. Anybody have any edits to this uh set of notes or uh someone can move to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty fourth.
Okay, the second?
Second.
Okay, vote, one, two, three. Okay, so we're approved and with that said, let's adjourn this meeting, thank you.
Right.